Need that. But you need a general like General Eisenhower to coordinate all of the doctors so you don't have one doctor giving one advice, another doctor giving another advice. The primary physician in my case made the decision with me. I don't believe a doctor should be paternalistic. He should be working as a team where I have something to say about my own life and health.
So do you have a main doctor in charge who helps sort all these things out? Keep everything in line?
Correct. He helps me to make the decision.
So Jerry, so having this main doctor allows you to, you form a partnership with this primary doctor, allows you to make better decisions, work as a partnership, work as a team?
Absolutely. And even today. I mean, before I had the primary physician, I had many doctors, but I still have many doctors. But if I am confused with anybody, what they're saying, what they recommend, I talk to the primary physician at all times.
So in sorting through this, you found that it was important to have a second opinion? And with this, you, these are complicated decisions, particularly around whether or not you're going to have a surgery. So you're sorting through this with your primary care doctor and using them as a resource?
One doctor suggested I had a hernia. He didn't suggest an operation, although I complained about a hernia problem. He said, "It doesn't hurt you that much, leave it alone." I went to the primary physician, he said, "I don't like that advice. I think you should take care of it while your health is good." And I went to surgeon and he said, "No, let's take care of it now, you're in good health." I did, and it's wonderful.
So good. And Jerry, we were talking about this booklet here that I suggested you read, This Talking With Your Doctor, available from the National Institute on Aging, available online or by calling in, free to anyone. Do you have any thoughts on this booklet? Anything you found particularly helpful? Things that our audience might want to know more about?
There's one thing that they didn't stress enough, I think, but it was excellent work. And that is, on two occasions, when I went to be operated on and the doctor asked my advice on something, the surgeon, and I didn't think that I was able to handle that question. And I said, "Talk to my people outside, let them make the decision." Another time, my son was in an operation.
So wait, hold on, let me understand that. So there was a, there was a point where you weren't able to make a decision on your own?
I didn't think I would, could be, I could make the decision.
Because you were under sedation?
I was under sedation.
So you had assigned a family member? You assigned your son to make the decision in your place?
Not only my son, my son, my daughter, and my wife.
Well, Jerry, thank you so much for...
God bless you, doctor, and good luck to you. You're doing wonderful work on this.
Thanks so much.
I'm taking charge of my health. I'm empowering patients.
Welcome back to Aging Well in L.A. Got something very interesting for you veterans out there and surviving spouses. I'm with Kathleen O'Sullivan and Bonnie Lederman. Did I get it right?
You did.
I did. This is a fascinating topic, the benefits that may be available to senior veterans. Bonnie, explain how you got this started.
Paul, in 2003, I started Veterans Home Care because my mom, Edie Spurling, passed away previously from breast cancer. It was consuming my trips back and forth, they were countless, from St. Louis to California. My mom needed home care, but her income was extremely low. I had nobody to help us. And I, when I did my research in the later months of her illness, I found that the Veterans Administration has a pension, it's called Aid and Attendance, and it's specifically used for home care.
I see.
And the benefit is strictly for veterans of wartime and surviving spouses.
I see.
The uniqueness of this is that my company, Veterans Home Care, helps veterans and surviving spouses get home care through this pension from the Veterans Administration. It has three requirements. Basically, it's for veterans and surviving spouses of the wartime eras, and they are World War II, Korean War, and Vietnam War.
And Vietnam, right.
The three requirements, of course, the person had to serve at least 90 days with one day during wartime of active duty, they need to have an honorable discharge. They also have to have a serious medical condition, which keeps them approximately 60% housebound.
I understand, okay.
And not driving.
Well, and, and non-medical home care, or even medical home care, is a much more efficient way to deliver services to people besides that their home and unfamiliar surroundings. Kathleen, is this a big population? I mean, you're not going to shock me if you tell me it's tens of thousands of people.
Oh, it's thousands of people. Forty-five percent of our seniors here are veterans.
Wow, now that's not surprising. Everybody was involved, especially World War II, and those are, that's really got to be the, the bubble of the population. So how does a person access these programs? Do they, they call or by your company, or is there an 800 number?
It's 877-878-4248.
Okay, and we'll have that on the screen. Get your pencil and paper out. Say it again, please, 87?
877-878-4248.
Okay, and is there a website as well?
Yes.
And that is?
Our website is www...I left the W.
That's right, we know that.
VeteransHomeCare.com.
VeteransHomeCare.com. All right, now, once you became energized on this subject, were you surprised when you saw how many people needed this service?
I knew it in my heart. When my mom was ill, I called my husband, I said, "We're starting a new business." Because there have to be thousands of people that are going through exactly what I went through in taking care of my parents. And the pension is difficult to get because you have to spend more than your income on medical expenses in order to receive this.
I understand, but that's not so hard to do with the costs of prescriptions and all the rest. Some of us are really being hammered.
The only qualifying expense that you can use is home care.
I see.
And most people can't afford to pay for home care and the rent. So that's what's unique about Veterans Home Care. We front the money for the veteran and surviving spouse. And when they get the money from the pension, they reimburse us for the services that we've given them.
I see. Well, that's wonderful. Because so often, the upfront costs of getting into a program are so intimidating, people say, "Oh, I just, I don't have the resources to do this."
And they throw their hands up.
Yeah. Now Kathleen, talk to me about planning ahead. What if you're like the son or daughter of a veteran who may be in this position? Can you kind of plan ahead to, to get these services in place before the need arises?
Yes, that's a great idea to do that. You know, there's a lot of paperwork to compile together.
I'm sure.
That, you know, they need to do that. So preparing for that is the best way, because we, you know, I pre-qualify them.
Yes, they need.
And then, I didn't miss that.
The papers that they need are going to be the discharge paper, which should be honorable, the marriage license, the death certificate, the death certificate of the spouse. And they need bank statements and a social security award.
You got to prove all of this stuff. Well, I hope this has been of value to you veterans out there who may be in this very unique position. Well, not so unique. Probably a lot of people out there are, are in this position. Help is available, we'll be putting back the telephone number and the website for you. So please, access this program, there's help available. We'll be right back.
We're here to scientifically prove the end result of riding a bicycle against traffic. The average car weighs 6,000 pounds. The average bicycle with rider weighs 170 pounds, give or take a few. A typical car traveling 35 miles per hour has 220 times the momentum or energy of a bike rider traveling 10 miles per hour. And if the two collide, bug splatter. Avoid being bug splatter. Ride right, stop at the light, watch the road.
Yo, check this out, I met the light, right? Dude was trying to fill me out, so I blew right past him. Ha ha, yeah, I won. But I wasn't the real winner, because he's alive and I'm dead.
What about my family? I wasn't even part of your street race. Now I'm dead.
And don't even think, man, that'll never happen to me, dog, because that's what I thought. And now, I didn't even get a chance to say goodbye.
Listen, life is important. Drive responsibly. Learn more at WatchTheRoad.org.
Welcome back to Aging Well in L.A. Now, anybody in this city knows that we have a great park system. And I want to introduce you to Anthony Montanez, who is with our city park system. And, and welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Our parks play an amazing key role in the lives of seniors because they can access those facilities. What were some of the special things you learned today about the role that the parks play in lives of seniors?
Well, what I learned through the speaker that, that spoke earlier was how we can attract the baby boomers. There's a lot of people out there that don't realize that they are seniors.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
And making our senior centers more attracted, attractive to them.
Sure. Now, what was the discussion? It was like games or outings?
More outings, camping, skiing, going out, jogging, mountain biking, just fun things to do. Not just sitting there and playing bingo, bingo and, and other, you know, table games are great.
Sure.
Some people want to get out and enjoy the outdoors.
Well, I think so. And the boomers are a lot more active. They like golf outings and going up the mountains, which are nearby, that's for sure. So is this something that you will pass on to activities directors at the various facilities?
Yes, a lot of our directors are in the, the knowledge fair, they're attending.
Yes.
And hopefully they'll take that back and we'll discuss it and how we can get some additional funding to do a lot of this.
Right, well, additional funding, that's going to be a challenge in these times, that's for sure. But have the, have the parks, have they been able to maintain at least a level of service that, that is sufficient?
I think we have. We haven't really had any major cutbacks. We have had some cutbacks, but I think we're going to be okay. We've got a good group of people out there working hard. We have a great volunteer corps, which really steps up during these times.
Well, I think it's great that when people, once they can get themselves there the first time, they sort of fall into the lifestyle, don't they?
Oh, yes.
And then they bring their best ideas, which I like to see. Now, are the nutrition programs, the delivery of parks, are they still going on?
Yes, they are. We have several different nutrition programs that come to our parks.
Right. I know I've always been encouraged to see how often our seniors are really getting a good meal and some guidance for nutrition at home.
Yeah, that's, that's a great thing about this. They, you know, the meals, I know they're not, they're filled with a lot of spices and salts and stuff, but they're, they're healthy meals and, you know, they, they also get the, the information they need to take this, take it home and, and make better meals at, at home.
Right, I think so. And the best part, though, is the socialization. Seniors getting together with their common interests, even if it's pulling out your wallet and saying, "Well, I've got a new grand kid."
Yeah, oh yeah, show their pictures.
Are the leagues still going on? The bowling leagues and the pool leagues and things like that?
We, we do have aqua aerobics.
Uh huh, great.
Water fitness programs at some of our facilities. We have lawn bowling at Arcadia Park.
Great.
And that seems to attract a lot of people, and it's a great sport.
That's good. Seniors got to get out more often. Anthony Montanez, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
And we'll be right back.
Welcome to Braille Institute, a nonprofit organization that has been designed to work with individuals with fading vision. Please come along with us as we explore our Vista Store, a store that has many different items and accessories that can support individuals with fading vision. I'm here with our Vista Store Coordinator, Jorge Marquez, who will explain some of the wonderful items that we have here available for people with low vision.
Hi. Here are a few devices that we have in, in our store. We have a 10x magnifier mirror. We also have a low-vision keyboard with large print as well. We have an atomic talking watch, and also with large numbers, so that the person can either look at the numbers or can hear the, the voice. We have a large print button TV remote control that will make it also easier for the person with fading vision. There is a large print big address book. We also have a giant print address book, which is much larger than the one before, with numbers and names that can be very bold in lines. And we also have as well, a pocket address book with large words and numbers. We have a pen that is called 2020. This pen will write in bold, and it doesn't leak, and it doesn't go through the page. As you can see, one, and you can see the numbers really bold for them. As you can see, these devices are very useful for individuals with fading vision. Come and see us at any time, we're here for you. And enjoy, thank you.
As you can see, we have so many opportunities here for people with fading vision. You may know somebody who has fading vision, or you yourself may have vision that's not doing so well. Remember, we are here. Come and see us, we are here to help you. Almost all of our students have some vision. Only 10% of people have no vision at all. You could be one of those, somebody with macular degeneration, glaucoma, diabetic retinopathy, or even cataracts. All of those are the people that are here. People with those diseases are the people that are here at Braille Institute. So please, come join us. Your life can be very good again.
Welcome back to Aging Well in L.A. We are still here at the Senior Centers Directors Gathering at the, the Braille Institute with a, a longtime friend of our show, Larry Lisnby. It's great to see you again, Larry.
Thank you, it's great to be here.
Are you enjoying the conference?
Absolutely. It was incredible this morning.
Yeah? I heard there was a standing ovation.
It was. He was, he had clearly done his homework. He gave us some really good practical suggestions about what we can do going forward to make our senior centers a success and to meet the needs of the boomers and the seniors.
Well, it's especially challenging in this year with, with the downsizing and the budget cuts. How are you doing over there at One Generation? Is it, are the challenges insurmountable?
No, they're surmountable, we think we're going to survive, but we do, we've lost staff due to layoffs, and those layoffs were a result of cutbacks in government funding and reductions in grants that are available out there.
Yeah, well, and the economy is flat, I don't know what else to call it. And isn't it remarkable, this happens at exactly the time when the needs are increasing because there are more and more seniors?
It's as if there were an inverse relationship. Just as our funding goes down, the need for services has gone up.
It's remarkable. I know I spoke with the seniors group, and we were talking about the greater need for volunteers who can help fill in the gap with their wisdom and their energy.
Yes, and because of cutbacks in staffing, the need for volunteers is going to increase this coming year.
I think so.
Most seniors would not be able to function, in my opinion, without additional volunteers.
It's true. This is a place where we really have to plug the holes. We, we need to step up and, whether it's meal delivery, or food service, or transportation, or just someone to help run the dance class, for goodness sake.
Yes, we, we're increasingly relying upon volunteers to conduct our programs, activities, exercises.
Well, of course, a volunteer gets so much more back. I know, I see that across the board, the volunteers are just, they beam with pleasure knowing they're doing some good for their community.
And the good news of all this is, as the baby boomers come online, more of them are interested in serving as opposed to being served.
Right.
So they're looking for meaningful outlets, and they have a lot to contribute.
Well, when you come away from this gathering, will you have some new ideas and some fresh approaches, you think?
Absolutely. I'm, I'm excited about getting back to my staff and saying, "Look, these are some of the things we learned about as a way that we can attract seniors to our center, make it more attractive, make their experience here more meaningful, more relevant." So that should be a, a good outcome.
That's a good reason to have these conferences, like-minded people sharing their best ideas.
Yes, it is. We do this every six months, and we always go away with things that we can do to make our centers more effective, more attractive, and to benefit the seniors.
Great. Larry, thank you again for being with us today, it's a great pleasure. And thanks so much for being with us today on Aging Well in L.A.
Hi, I'm Eric Garcetti, and I'm proud to represent Hollywood on the Los Angeles City Council. There are so many interesting things to see here, some famous, some less famous but just as interesting. Today, we'll show you one of each. So let's go on location at one of Hollywood's landmarks. The Kodak Theatre on Hollywood Boulevard has been home of the Academy Awards since it opened in 2001. During the Oscars, this street becomes the world's most famous red carpet. Outside the theater, visitors can check out the awards walk that honors all the Best Picture winners. Starting in 2010, the Kodak will become the permanent home of a new Cirque du Soleil show about Hollywood, of course. Take a tour of the theater and sit in the seat of your favorite Oscar nominee. For more information, visit www.kodaktheater.com. After you've seen the Kodak Theater, take a walk down the street and check out another Hollywood locale. Just down the street from the place where the world's most respected actors gather to celebrate achievements in film, acting students at the Stella Adler Academy are also honing their craft. Named for the actress who started the academy in 1949, this facility includes small theaters where visitors can see up and coming talent. It's all right here in Hollywood, so bring your family and check it out today.
Hi, I'm Craig Erwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Erwin, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, Power City, our channel.
Thank you to Councilmembers Weezer, Corretts, Labange, Rosendahl, and Wesson. We are expecting everybody but the partners, the councilmembers Cardenas and Perry, the councilmembers Alarcon, Englander, Kirkorian, Parks, Reyes, and Zine, who please join us as soon as possible. And thank you to the public for your patience while we wait a quorum, we will begin shortly.
a good Labor Day, and this is the first City Council session in two weeks. We celebrate Thank you, Madam Clerk, for Mr. Reyes's arrival. Let's call the roll and begin the the end of the summer and the beginning of our fall shortly, but I want to thank all meeting. those council members for their service over the recess in their offices. And welcome members of the public who are here with us today. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by my colleagues who are here, council members Jose Wezar, Paul Corretts, Tom Labange, Bernard Parks, Bill Rosendahl, and Herb Wesson. We do not expect today council members Cardenas or Perry, but otherwise, we do expect a full complement. So if council members Alarcon, Englander, Kerkorian, Reyes, and Zine will please join us as soon as possible. As soon as we have 10 members, which constitutes 2/3, or 10 members of our body, that will be a quorum, and we can begin business. In the meantime, I want to welcome again those folks who are here in our council chambers, in the John Farrar Council Chambers, Room
Alarcon, Cardenas, Englander, Wezar, Corretts, Kerkorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes,
340 here in City Hall. We also are broadcast in two remote locations where constituents
Rosendahl, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
contestify remotely as well. Those are in Van Nuys and San Pedro City Halls, and we Thank you. First order of business, please. also are available through the Internet, and through the telephone, and on cable television,
Approval of the minutes?
Channel 35. So please avail yourself of any of those ways of following your City Council All right, Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Labange seconds, without objection. Those in action. Also, at our city's homepage, besides streaming webcasts of these council will be approved. Next order of business? meetings, we archive all of our past council meetings for your convenience, and we have
Communal resolutions for approval.
our agendas, and any items, the supplementing materials for the items that we vote on as All right, Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Englander seconds, without objection. That'll be approved well. So with that, we will, again, have a quorum call for those members that we are as well. This is Tuesday, and we begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. We do awaiting, council members Alarcon, Englander, Kerkorian, Reyes, and Zine. Our agendas are this every Tuesday, but obviously, this will be the last time we do this before our commemorations available, in the meantime, in the back. If you'd like to be heard on any of the items of a decade after 9/11. And we will probably say some things more in the end of the month, before us, all items receive either a public hearing in committee or in the full council. sorry, the end of the week, on Friday, about those commemorations. But if I could ask If they are in committee, then it requires a council member to reopen those hearings everybody, please, in chambers, to rise with special meaning. Mr. Reyes, would you be to have it here in the full council meeting. But any items that have not yet had a public kind enough to lead us in the pledge of allegiance today? hearing, filling out a speaker card will automatically trigger that public hearing
Thank you, Council President. It's my honor. Everybody stand, right hand above
under our State's Brown Act. We also have a section of the meeting called "General Public
your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America,
Comment" for items that are not on today's agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty
of the City Council. Again, feel free to fill out a speaker card here or in Van Nuys
and justice for all.
and San Pedro, and we'll be sure to hear your comments at that time of the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Colleagues, if I can direct your attention to the agenda. We now are at eight members. Now we're at nine members with Mr. Englander, and so we're We'll run through the agenda for any items you wish to call special. First items, please, just awaiting Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Kerkorian, and Mr. Reyes. As soon as one of them arrives, Madam Clerk. we will begin the meeting. Thank you for your patience, in the meantime, and we will
Items 1 and 2 are public convenience or necessity items, in Council Districts 9
begin shortly. Thank you.
and 1, respectively. Motiones are required for both items.
Okay. We'll hold number 1. And Mr. Reyes, does he want to make a motion on number 2? Mr. Reyes? Does he want to make a motion on item 2? It's a Council District 1, it's a public convenience and necessity?
No.
Okay. It requires a motion, so I'll hold on the table, and you can decide whether you want to make it or not. Let's hold 3 as well until we have Mr. Alarcon here, and that'll allow us to vote on the ordinance. That leaves us with item 4.
And there's cards on item number 4.
Okay. We'll call that special for cards in the public. Next items, please.
Items 5 through 7 are items which public hearings have been held. There was request to continue item 5 for 90 days to December 6.
Okay. Is there any objection to continuing item number 5? If not, we'll do that for 90 days until December 6. Sixth or fifth, I'm sorry?
Sixth.
Sixth, okay. Till 12/6. 6 and 7, anybody wishing to call 6 or 7 special? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on those two items, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 8 through 27 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Is there any objection to consideration? If not, those are before us. Do we have any cards on any of these?
Yes, there are cards on items 9, 10, 13, 15, 16, 17, 19, 20, 23, and 25.
Okay. Mr. Corretts, specials?
I'd like to call item 8 special on behalf of Mr. Wesson and myself.
Okay. Are there specials? Mr. Englander, did you have one as well? Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? Let's hold 11 as well till we have Mr. Alarcon here. That leaves us 12, 14, 18, 21, and 22, 24, 26, and 27. If we can please open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, those are approved. We'll now turn to our General Public Comment, just for items, again, that are not on the agenda today but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. Phyllis Stority is our first speaker. Good September to you, and after that, we'll hear from Samuel Sperling.
A lot of things happened while you were gone, starting the day after the recess for the council. 14 trees were cut down at the East Valley Shelter. This is now how our beautiful shelter, which we paid for landscaping out of the bond funds, looks. The entire street is covered with banners that do not send the message that we ordinarily send for our city shelters. And this seems to be the purpose, which is to advertise the Bernheim Foundation. Stephen Bernheim, a Beverly Hills attorney, says that he pays for all, paid for all of this, the chopping of the trees and the banner, and you can see the size of his logo, which, incidentally, is also identical to his logo for his music company. Mrs. Barnett is denying that she authorized it, although she called personally on her cellphone to the shelter and told the employees who were trying to stop it that she had authorized it and forgot to send them an email. We are now facing $17,000 to have the stumps removed, these stumps of these beautiful trees that are approximately 2 inches out of the ground to 2 feet, and Mrs. Barnett says that the department will pay for it. We paid for the trees. We should not pay for the removal. Something else very important happened. I hope you look at this, gentlemen, because these are the banners that are on South Central LA Shelter right now. These are African-American children playing with a pit bull, and it says "South Central Animal Shelter." This is not the name of the shelter, and we do not racially profile for the community. The other banner that is down there is a Latino girl with a pit bull kissing her in the mouth. These are for South Central, and they are put up by Best Friends Animal Society. On the West LA Shelter, we have an Asian boy and a white girl. So Best Friends is racially profiling all over the city with banners on our animal shelters. It's not the message we want to send out. We don't adopt out animals just for children. We adopt them out to responsible adults.
Thank you very much, Phyllis. Our next speaker is Samuel Sperling. Samuel Sperling, after that, will be Arnold Sachs.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. President Garcetti, council members, I'm Samuel M. Sperling. I'm here to expose your dereliction. You let the civil service system be dismantled, and you let that happen without giving the voters a say in the matter. Each of you promised to uphold the city charter, but you violated that oath. You let a series of mayors, three to be exact, trample the charter, stifle the Board of Civil Service Commissioners, and grab its powers for themselves. You've failed to oversee the city's personnel function. You've refused to investigate documented claims of performance mismanagement. You've totally abandoned the personnel-related duties assigned in Section 242B. Mr. President, council members, your constituents deserve better than that. If you don't keep your promises, if you won't protect civil service, you should give back your paychecks and seek other employment.
Thank you, Mr. Sperling. Thank you for your emails as well. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. After that, we'll go to Van Nuys. Miriam Fogler will be our first speaker from Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Sachs.
Good morning, Mr. President. Thank you. Welcome back. Yeah, a couple of things to catch up on. When last we left, there was a huge discussion about bus benches in the city of LA, and Councilman Zine was all over the Department of Public Works, furious about the contract, and what was unknown, about how many bus benches there were, and what were we being paid, charged, paid, and what's the city standings. And he said that we need to review these contracts. But Councilman Zine neglected to make a motion, because he certainly was nothing seconded in council chambers regarding reviewing those contracts. And speaking of reviewing those contracts, Councilman Corretts, I believe, was the maker of the 10% motion to review all city contracts and get 10% back. So why wouldn't the contract with the bus benches be considered when you were discussing the budget fiasco? But going back to the bus benches, this is a copy of some document that somebody handed me, categorical exemption narrative. The contract provides for a minimum of 4,000 bus stop sites citywide, and a minimum of 300 bus benches in each of the city's district, cities' 15 council districts. It provides for 300 bus sites, bus benches, in each one of the districts. That's 15, that's 4,500. So there's got to be more than 44,000 bus sites if you have 4,500 bus benches. And who's responsible for that? Is that the Department of Public Works, or is that a request for proposal action, or is that just the English language? I don't know. We'll leave it up to the City Council. Here's another story. It's Legacy Time for Vieira Gosa, and in this story, it reminds people that 473 employees were laid off last year for budget problems. And we had the city's general, the accounting office finish, do a research for the AEG Stadium, told us that...
Thank you, sir. Sorry. Loud folks kind of finished their sentence, but Miriam Fogler will be our next speaker, and she's in Van Nuys. Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Fogler.
Good morning. You're up to your old antics. Here we go again, going after Prop 13 as usual. This is your usual script, that let's go and tear it up and see if we can create jobs from that money. And then, you know, that means thousands of corporations, you know, especially the city of Vernon, you want to get them, because you very much want their tax revenues. You want their money. So you are hungry for so much money here, and so hyped up, that you're willing to spend $27 million of taxpayers' hard-earned money for us to have good-looking, oh, we're sitting pretty, park, I mean, not park benches, but bus benches. And they're not comfortable, are they, Donna? And, you know, and then you have, of course, you want to make the trash cans look lovely. So then, you want to make the animal shelters look lovely by putting up nice, beautiful banners. Well, I think this guy has an interest in taking over the animal shelters. Believe me, I think he's got an ulterior motive behind this thing. They all do. And it's all racially motive, and it shouldn't be that way. We all should be loving animals, because God gave it to us, and we should be following, walking with God and loving God. I don't know why you people are destroying this world that you came into. You were supposed to leave it a better place when you leave it. So I don't understand what your thinking here is. It's not the ethics that you had put in, Prop H. You're not being transparent. You're being untransparent. You're being unfair to the taxpayers here.
Thank you, Miriam. Donna Perman is our next speaker. She is also in Van Nuys. Good morning, Donna.
Good morning. It's good to see you back, except that I see you needed a time off to come up with probably new revenue. Yeah, anyways, with Proposition 13, they're starting off with the commercial, but soon, folks, it's going to be going to the residential and apartments. You know, don't think it's going to stop there. You know, these people have been wanting to get rid of 13 for a long time. Our governor never liked 13, and it's going to try to get rid of 13 whatever they can. And they want to get rid of the 2/3s, making a, they'll get rid of the 2/3s votes, though. They'll make it easier for them to pass things, so that when they go over there, even if they have a low turnout, it'll be pretty easy to get the 1/2, the simple majority, I meant. And one thing I wanted to say about the bus benches, I don't know why it's going to cost so much money to maintain these things. And a lot of these times, these bus benches are out in the sun, and I've been in areas where I don't go over to the bus bench, because it's, especially in the hot sun, you don't want to go over there. So you, a lot of people go find spots over in the shade, and they don't even use the benches. So unless you find a way to get the bus benches shaded, you're going to find a lot of these bus benches that you're spending so much money on, or it's not going to be used. How much was that again?
$27 million.
$27 million a year, isn't it? I think that we can't afford anything like this. I mean, in the meantime, all the city employees are asking to give, make concessions, so that we can have $27 million spent on bus benches. I mean, a lot of areas where maybe the buses won't even come by. The MTA should do it. We're paying sales tax on that, so that's where it should come from. So we got to come up with a lot better way than having everyone pay for these $27 million a year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Matt Dowd is our next speaker here in council chambers. After that, will be Dr. Tom Williams.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Eric Garcetti. City Council, the corruption factory cranks back up after the break. You can check it on LA City News. Zooma Dog's out there blogging it all, because he didn't settle the case. Here's the letter from the attorney, to your attorney, that went in on Friday, because the federal judge, see, here's what happened. If you're just watching and you've never seen us before, I'm Matt Dowd, Zooma Dog. We came in here, performers from Venice Beach. The police were harassing us, because I had a microphone stand over 4 feet high, and because I had a cardboard cut out of Hannah, Montana, the kiddies were taking their pictures with, and the police, I've been to jail, I had 17 citations, a bunch of harassment. And so the federal judges had enough, and they put out a court order that says, settle the case, go to the conference, and don't bring anybody who needs a supervisor. Now, that's critical. I've never seen that before. It's like, bitch, please, don't bring somebody who needs to go, oh, let me check, because you've wasted so much time, and it's costing the city a bunch of money. So here it is. This is calculations, Zooma Dog, Matt Dowd, we're all on there. There's like 10 or 11 performers for four years of violations of Venice Beach. It comes to like 1.6 million. And I was here warning about it forever. I warned, and they did nothing. You did nothing. Bill Rosendahl, he did nothing. The city attorneys are doing nothing. Dion O'Connell just wanted to violate me. So we're finally getting somewhere, though. There's no more rules that decorum, they're, they're, they're closing it all down. We're going to amend it all. I'll give you the nice sanitized, the official Matt Dowd version, and hopefully, we'll see Zooma Dog back down here when we got some kind of...
Thank you. Dr. Tom Williams is our next speaker. Do we have a name change, Dr. Williams? Or do you go by both?
I got confused. I got confused. Dr. Clyde Thomas Williams.
Gotcha.
Of El Sereno, LA 32 Neighborhood Council member also. We'd like to report on an activity this last weekend. Summer Night Lights finished. The finale was held in El Sereno Recreation Center, our park. Before that, and even after that, we're having a group called Fix El Sereno Park, and we helped contribute to getting things done in the El Sereno Park before the finale of the Summer Night Lights. We're also working with the...
Thank you, Mr. Spurling. Thank you for your emails as well. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that, we'll go to Van Nuys. Miriam Fogler will be our first speaker from Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Sacks.
Good morning, Mr. President. Thank you. Welcome back. You know, a couple of things to catch up on. When last we left, there was a huge discussion about bus benches in the city of L.A. and Councilman Zine was all over the Department of Public Works furious about the contract and what was unknown about how many bus benches there were and what we were being paid, charged, paid, and what's the city standings. And he said that we need to review these contracts. But Councilman Zine neglected to make a motion because he certainly was nothing seconded in council chambers regarding reviewing those contracts. And speaking of reviewing those contracts, Councilman Corretts, I believe, was the maker of the 10% motion to review all city contracts and get 10% back. So why wouldn't the contract with the bus benches be considered when you were discussing the budget for Yasko? But going back to the bus benches, this is a copy of some document that somebody handed me, categorical exemption narrative. The contract provides for a minimum of 4,000 bus stop sites citywide and a minimum of 300 bus benches in each of the city's district, city's 15 council districts. It provides for 300 bus sites, bus benches in each one of the districts. That's 15, that's 4,500. So there's got to be more than 44,000 bus sites if you have 4,500 bus benches. And who's responsible for that? Is that the Department of Public Works? Or is that a request for proposal action? Or is that just the English language? I don't know. We'll leave it up to the city council. Here's another story. It's legacy time for Vieira Gosa. And in this story, it reminds people that 473 employees were laid off last year for budget problems. And we had the city's general, the accounting office, do a research for the AEG Stadium.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Sorry. Loud folks kind of finished their sentence. But Miriam Fogler will be our next speaker, and she's in Van Nuys. Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Fogler.
Good morning. You're up to your old antics. Here we go again, going after Prop 13 as usual. This is your usual script that let's go and tear it up and see if we can create jobs from that money. And then, you know, that means thousands of corporations, you know, especially the city of Vernon, you want to get them because you very much want their tax revenues, you want their money. So you are hungry for so much money here and so hyped up that you're willing to spend $27 million of taxpayers' hard-earned money for us to have good-looking, oh, we're sitting pretty park, I mean, not park benches, but bus benches. And they're not comfortable, are they, Donna? And, you know, and then you have, of course, you want to make the trash cans look lovely. So then you want to make the animal shelters look lovely by putting up nice, beautiful banners. Well, I think this guy has an interest in taking over the animal shelters, believe me. I think he's got an ulterior motive behind this thing. They all do. And it's all racially motive, and it shouldn't be that way. We all should be loving animals because God gave it to us, and we should be following, walking with God and loving God. I don't know why you people are destroying this world that you came into, you were supposed to leave it a better place when you leave it. So I don't understand what your thinking here is. It's not the ethics that you had put in, Prop H. You're not being transparent, you're being untransparent, you're being unfair to the taxpayers here.
Thank you, Miriam. Donna Perriman is our next speaker. She is also in Van Nuys. Good morning, Donna.
Good morning. It's good to see you back, except that I see you needed a time off to come up with probably new revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyways, with Proposition 13, they're starting off with the commercial, but soon, folks, it's going to be going to the residential and apartments. You know, don't think it's going to stop there. You know, these people have been wanting to get rid of 13 for a long time. Our governor never liked 13, and it's going to try to get rid of 13 whatever they can. And they want to get rid of the two-thirds, making a, they'll get rid of the two-thirds votes, though, they'll make it easier for them to pass things so that when they go over there, even if they have a low turnout, it'll be pretty easy to get the one half, the simple majority, I meant. And one thing I wanted to say about the bus benches, I don't know why it's going to cost so much money to maintain these things. And a lot of these times, these bus benches are out in the sun, and I've been in areas where I don't go over to the bus bench because it's, especially in the hot sun, you don't want to go over there. So you, a lot of people go find spots over in the shade, and they don't even use the benches. So unless you find a way to get the bus benches shaded, you're going to find a lot of these bus benches that you're spending so much money on, or it's not going to be used. How much was that again?
Twenty-seven million dollars.
Twenty-seven million dollars a year, isn't it? I think that we can't afford anything like this. I mean, and meantime, all the city employees are asking to give, make concessions so that we can have $27 million spent on bus benches. I mean, a lot of areas where maybe the buses won't even come by. The MTA should do it. We're paying sales tax on that, so that's where it should come from. So we got to come up with a lot better way than having everyone pay for these $27 million a year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Matt Dowd is our next speaker here in council chambers. After that will be Dr. Tom Williams.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Eric Garcia City. City Council, the corruption factory cranks back up after the break. You can check it on L.A. City News. Zooma Dog's out there blogging it all because he didn't settle the case. Here's the letter from the attorney to your attorney that went in on Friday because the federal judge, see, here's what happened. If you're just watching and you've never seen us before, I'm Matt Dowd, Zooma Dog. We came in here, performers from Venice Beach. The police were harassing us because I had a microphone stand over four feet high and because I had a cardboard cutout of Hannah Montana the kiddies were taking their pictures with. And the police, I've been to jail, I had 17 citations, a bunch of harassment. And so the federal judges had enough, and they put out a court order that says, settle the case, go to the conference, and don't bring anybody who needs a supervisor. Now, that's critical. I've never seen that before. It's like, bitch, please, don't bring somebody who needs to go, oh, let me check, because you've wasted so much time and it's costing the city a bunch of money. So here it is, this is calculations, Zooma Dog, Matt Dowd, we're all on there. There's like 10 or 11 performers for four years of violations of Venice Beach. It comes to like 1.6 million. And I was here warning about it forever. I warned, and they did nothing, you did nothing. Bill Rosendahl, he did nothing. The city attorneys are doing nothing. Dion O'Connell just wanted to violate me. So we're finally getting somewhere, though. There's no more rules at decorum, they're closing it all down. We're going to amend it all. I'll give you the nice sanitized, the official Matt Dowd version, and hopefully we'll see Zooma Dog back down here when we got some kind of.
Thank you. Dr. Tom Williams is our next speaker. Do we have a name change, Dr. Williams? Or do you go by both?
I got confused. Dr. Clyde Thomas Williams.
Got you.
Of El Sereno, L.A. 32 neighborhood council member also. We'd like to report on an activity this last weekend. Summer Night Lights finished. The finale was held in El Sereno Recreation Center, our park. Before that, and even after that, we're having a group called Fix El Sereno Park, and we helped contribute to getting things done in the El Sereno Park before the finale of the Summer Night Lights. We're also working with the Department of Public Works, the Department of Wrenton Park, all together and with CD 14, we're having a progressive development of our park, a lot with volunteers. And yeah, we're having our typical bureaucrat versus volunteer problems of coordination and such, but at least we're trying. And we hope that other neighborhood councils, other groups, will do the same thing with their parks because these are precious, and they've been precious for this last three months. We're sad that Summer Night Lights is gone now. So we'd like to appreciate what the council has done for Summer Night Lights and also the Wrenton Park Department, the Department of Public Works, the Office of Community Beautification, that's part of the Board of Public Works. So it worked. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to El Sereno for hosting the closing ceremonies this past weekend. It was great to be there. Daniel Gus is our next speaker. After that, we'll hear from Donna Oakley.
Good morning and welcome back. We have a theme this morning of city appointees and city employees thinking that they're above the law, such as Animal Services Commissioner Ruth Ann Secunda, who was recently cited in West Los Angeles for having an unlicensed and unleashed dog. How can an animal services commissioner be cited for an unlicensed and unleashed dog and still serve as an animal services commissioner? What makes the situation worse, Mr. Corretts? What makes the situation worse is that she pulled the "do you know who I am" card, a commissioner pulling the "do you know who I am" card, to try to get out of a fine that you and I and Mr. Huizar and Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Wesson would all have to pay. Please call in Ruth Ann Secunda and find out, was she cited for having an unlicensed and unleashed dog in Los Angeles? And did she pull the "do you know who I am" card out of it? Because she needs to go if that's the case. Then call in Brenda Barnett and see if she attempted to sweep this citation under the rug. Is the general manager having her own gold card desk moment and sweeping commissioners' citations away? If so, Ms. Barnett needs to be fired. Now, and that's the, this self-righteous thing going on. On that note, why did Ms. Barnett allow a man by the name of Bernie Bernheim to chop down the trees at three city shelters, including the East Valley Shelter? That is a $1,000 fine and immediate restoration of those trees. If I did that, if you did that, hands behind the back and we're going to jail. So how can Ms. Barnett allow Mr. Bernheim to chop down city-owned trees? This is a crime. $1,000 per infraction, make him restore that, and find out why Ms. Barnett is allowing that and not telling you about it. Then ask her what happened to the Heigl funds, because she's not telling you the truth about that either.
Thank you, Mr. Gus. Donna Blakely, excuse me, I said Oakley. Donna Blakely is our next speaker. After that will be Danny Weisman.
Hi, my name is Donna Blakely. I'm here on the sanitation department. They are speaking of with the city council and sanitation department, what I found out last month, is going to take away the, from the low-income, Social Security, SSI, disabled people of that, for the program, that lifeline program, they wanted to take that away, but what it will do is, for the people that can't hear, they won't be able to see a light that come on, or for the people that can't see, they won't be able to use a brass to type, or to have no advantage for people that's in the hospital, and the bills are being too much, it's cheap to be at home, and they on oxygen tank, they won't be able to come home and use the oxygen tank, it'd be just like murdering them. They talk about lifting that, and every month, they're going to charge more and more, it sounds ridiculous. So this is why I'm here, because the sanitation department uses this committee all the time. They said they sent out letters, but they never did send out letters to us stating that this is going to happen. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention, the devastation and the crime that it would do on handicapped people, elderly, people that's blind, deaf, and the low-income people because they can't keep up with the cost. People on SSI, Social Security, have one income. Every month, they told me it's going to be hard, like my bill was $56 last month, now it's $74 this month. And I believe that that's the injustice, because if America can help around the globe, we can at least help our own people at home.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate your comments today. Our last speaker is Danny Weisman. Good to see you, sir, and good morning.
Good to see you too, sir. Nice to see all of you, and welcome home. I have the honor of presenting a proposition, a proposal from the Los Angeles Neighborhood Council Coalition. I am its secretary. You have before you, I hope, all you received, the four-sheet handout that I've given you. I'm going to read the proposal, and I'll explain its content and its reason. I think it's really very serious, and when I come before this microphone, I'm not only speaking to you, gentlemen and ladies of the council, I'm speaking to the audience that listens to this. The proposition is this. The Los Angeles Neighborhood Council Coalition proposes that no changes be made in our city council committees until there has been a full and public review of the consequences of these actions. Now, the actions in question are clearly the responsibility of the president of the council, and they should be. The presidents of almost all organizations have these authorities to be able to appoint people to committees. But there will be a committee meeting at 1:00 this afternoon of the new jobs and businesses committees, which hasn't been promulgated. We don't have a charge to that committee. There will be several other new committees, but the committee that worries me the most, and ladies and gentlemen, I would appreciate some eye contact now. Thank you, Mr. Corretts. What has happened here is Mr. Garcetti has decided to eliminate the education and neighborhoods committee. I've tried to be in touch with Mr. Corretts's office to understand, Mr. Krikorian's office, excuse me, to understand from his point of view what has happened. I've tried to understand that from Mr. Garcetti's point of view, and our entire neighborhood council is trying to understand what you are doing and why, and why this has been done in camera and not been made public.
Thank you. There will be a resolution on all the authorities, but, Mr. Weisman, the Arts, Parks, and Neighborhoods Committee keeps neighborhoods there in a strong and arguably even stronger committee than where it was before. Under Mr. Krikorian's continued leadership, there is no way a diminution of power, it is of anything an elevation. So that is at least our motivation, and thank you for your comments. Thank you. That will close our, and I'm happy to talk to you more about it later, but we'll have to close our public comment right now on our general public comment, but we'll go to items now called special. We have, first, Mr. Reyes, did you want to make a motion on item two?
Yes.
In favor?
In favor, yes.
Okay, to allow. Let's go ahead and open the roll on item two, then. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay. Let's take up next, we have the ordinances that we are waiting 12 members for, we do have that. So items three and 11, we can please open the roll on those. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those both are approved as well. If we could reconsider, or is it possibly to ministerially add Mr. Cardenas to items five through seven, 12, 18, 21, 22, 24, 26, 27, or should we reconsider those? Madam Clerk? Okay, let's reconsider. It doesn't change the outcome of the votes, the city attorney says it's fine with his presence here. We'll make sure it's recorded. Okay, we'll record Mr. Cardenas on those as well. Our next item, our next item called special. It's items five through seven, 12, 18, 21, 22, 24, and 26 and 27. Go next to items that have been called special for cards from the public. First, item four. Yes, Mr. Krikorian?
As for reconsideration of item number 26 for purposes of introducing a substitute motion.
Absolutely. Let's go ahead and open the roll reconsideration for Mr. Krikorian, item 26. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
We'll call that special for Mr. Krikorian, and Mr. Parks, yes.
I would just like to move item one in behalf of Ms. Perry to accept that public convenience and necessity.
Okay. Take a vote on item one, then. Please open the roll on one. Moving approval. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
I'm sorry, we do have a card on item one. Let's reconsider that, please. Open the roll on actually one and two. We'll take them together, Mr. Dowd. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. Dowd, if you'd like to come forward on items one and two. My apologies.
Thank you. Apologies accepted. I got the reconsideration straight away. So I love to come down here and keep a check on the city, make sure you're not trying to slide things through without having Brown Act requirements. But I understand, we're all, everything's changed now, we got the bongs over here, you had to change sides finally, everything's different, so I'm going to, I'm going to accept the apology and understand that you're under a lot of stress, so let me talk about these now. Alcohol sales, and there's two of them downtown here, two more liquor, you know, mini-market, convenience store. And here's why I want to comment, you know, I think you need more public urination facilities, you know, restrooms, even if they're coin-operated, something, because you've got a huge population of homeless downtown, and here you are, you're making more alcohol outlets, and that's where the alcohol consumption leads, and you're going to get a lot more street urination from all the people down here because there's nowhere, you know, there's just a bunch of homeless, and that's one of the main complaints from your downtown stakeholders to Jan Perry. So here we are, it's like, oh, wait, yeah, let's approve these applications, you know, public convenience or necessity. So that's what I'm talking about, public convenience, because that's what they're doing out there. I'm not even going into the other, you know, the other more uglier side of the equation. So I got to, thanks for the reconsideration. I have to step up and be against these public convenience or necessity. I don't think they're necessary, and especially if you don't have the restrooms to accommodate for all the people who are using this necessity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dowd. We'll close the public comments on item one and two, which have both been moved for approval. If we can open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, that is approved. Next, we have a request to take 13 and 15 up out of order and recognize, okay, recognize Mr. Alarcon, and then we do have a number of distinguished guests who are here. We look forward to hearing from Mr. Alarcon.
Councilmember, we are joined by several members of the Filipino community in recognition of items 13 and 15. These are in support of an assembly bill and a resolution in Congress, the, having to do with the Filipino community, first, to recognize Filipino veterans, and second, to recognize the history of Filipinos in the United States in our curriculum. So with that, I'd like to open it up for public comment, and the details will come forward as the speakers speak.
Great, thank you. We are very honored to have Mary Jo Bernardo, our good friend, the council general, as our first speaker. Please, always an honor to receive you in chambers, and thank you for your presence. Good morning.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Council President Eric Garcetti, distinguished members of the city council. I wish to thank very much Councilmember Alarcon for the resolutions that he has put forward before the city council in support of the, in support of Assembly Resolution AJR 6, otherwise known as the Filipino Veterans Fairness Act of 2011, in support of House Resolution 210. This is for the benefit of the Filipino World War II veterans, and also in support of Assembly Bill AB 199 entitled, the Filipinos in World War II Social Studies Curriculum Act. We thank you very much for this support that has been put forward by Councilmember Alarcon. We hope that the city council will be able to support these resolutions. Our Filipino World War II veterans have fought side by side with our Philippine, with our American friends during World War II, and time is of the essence, Council President, and I hope that the recognition due to Filipino World War II veterans will finally come forth. Thank you very much, and we hope to see the support of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Council General. We appreciate your words very much and your work on this. Arturo Garcia is our next speaker, will be followed by Genevieve Japanda.
Distinguished and honorable members of the city council, I have been here for several occasions, and I know that the city council is always gracious to support and recognize the services of the Filipino veterans during World War II and the sacrifices of the Philippine nation to win the victory in World War II. I am glad to report to you that the Justice for Filipino-American Veterans, for its lobby, since January 2011, we have now 54 cosponsors in the U.S. Congress. And with your support in supporting House Resolution 210 and recognizing the services of the Filipino veterans, putting it on record for the students and all Americans to learn the contribution of our veterans to the victory of World War II, we are sure that everybody will recognize, and the U.S. Congress will surely give the benefits due to our veterans and widows. The U.S. Congress is always gracious to give our veterans many benefits, but that benefits are only for American veterans. We wish, now that our veterans are in the twilight of their years, that they be recognized as American veterans, and their services be recognized as American veterans, and they will be a full-blooded American veterans for sure. And again, I thank you, and I hope you support this resolution, and thank you for Councilmember Richard Alarcon of District 7 in Panorama City. Thank you very much. Mabuhay, I'm City Council of Los Angeles. Mabuhay, gayo lahat.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Arturo. Genevieve Japanda is our next speaker from the office of Assemblywoman Fiona Ma, Eddie Angelus. The Makati Sister City Chair will follow.
Good morning, honorable city council members. My name is Genevieve Japanda, and I am a district representative for Assemblywoman Speaker Pro Tem Fiona Ma, who is a co-author of both of these bills. I just wanted to come before you and thank you for your support, especially Councilmember Alarcon. I also wanted to thank the council general for being here, as well as some of the organizations locally, especially SEPA and Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees, as well as staff member Melissa Ramosa of Senator Ted Lu's office, who has done a really great job in building the coalition here in Los Angeles. I wanted to, again, express our thanks and all your support in making sure that our Filipino World War II veterans receive the recognition and the benefits that they have earned and they dearly deserve. Thank you very much.
Eddie Angelus, a familiar face at Los Angeles City Hall.
Good morning, council members. I'm here actually as a Filipino-American advocate. A lot of times, folks know me within the council chambers as a city attorney's office, as a member of the city attorney's office. But often I tell this story about my younger years, and the younger years began But often, I tell this story about my younger years, and the younger years began in September 21st, 1972, which my plane was the last plane to leave the Philippines before martial law was declared. I actually landed in Hawaii when I was seven years old and found out that martial law was declared in the Philippines. But the prelude to that story is actually, is my grandfather. I am the grandson of a member of the United Service of Veterans, United Service of the Armed Forces in the Philippines. He was a United States Army veteran who fought in World War II amid Douglas MacArthur. And growing up as a child, I had very many stories to tell about those days. And as Filipinos would always, there was this phrase that we usually use, we said, "Oh, nung panahon ng Hapon," and then you would hear the stories. And what that usually entails is during the time of the Japanese occupation, and then there would be these elaborate stories. I heard a lot of those stories primarily because I was a grandson that took my grandfather to those senior citizen dances and spent a lot of time on the bus with him and going and hearing about those times. And this is a generation that didn't speak bitterly, that didn't speak at any point about the hard times that they faced. This is a generation that really had a great deal of pride of being Americans. So I really thank you as a council for taking this matter on. I, I thank Jerome Horton, the Chair of the Board of Equalization, who initiated this particular movement in the state of California, and I thank each every council member for taking it on. There's probably not a district that's not touched by the Filipino-American community here and around the horseshoe. So I will close with this. I just got off the phone with my brother, who then told me that my, my nephew will be deployed to Iraq and on Sunday, September 11th. So this bridge that we've created between the veterans of the World War II, my grandfather, and the current fight that we have really reflect the courage that we as Filipino-Americans don't want to be forgotten. We as Filipino-Americans and as Filipinos have made a contribution to this country, and we want what's due to us. So I thank you, and I encourage you to support these initiatives.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Jay Valencia.
President Eric Garcetti, the illustrious council members of Los Angeles City Council, good morning. I came to support our dynamic and energetic Seventh District Councilmember Honorable Richard Alarcon on his fourth resolution in support of both A B 199 and A J R 6. A B 199, "The Filipinos in World War II Social Curriculum Act," is the first step toward ensuring the role of Filipino-American World War II veterans. This bill will recognize the heroism of 200 Filipino, Filipino workers, soldiers who fought for the United States and won the war in the Pacific. It is also a recognition of the heroic sacrifices of more than 1 million Filipinos who died during the War of Democracy. The Filipino-American community is in gratitude to the Los Angeles City Council for doing what is just and taking this, the extra step to give justice to the Filipino-American veterans and their widows. This means much to the community they represent. By recognizing their services and the sacrifices of the Filipino nation, we build a friendship of our people and our community in the United States of America sealed in blood and sacrifices, as well as solidarity and friendship as one people. Sisye pwede, mabuhay ang City Council.
Ivy Dulay.
Good morning, City Council.
Good morning.
My name is Ivy Dulay, and I'm the Outreach Coordinator for Search to Involve Filipino-Americans, CIPA, which is a nonprofit based in historic Filipino town, and we've been serving the community for over 38 years. Thank you to Assemblymember Fiona Ma and Councilmember Alarcon for bringing up this issue that is very important to our community. Although I'm grateful for having the revelation of Filipino veterans later on in my college years, I could only imagine how much of a difference it would have made if I had learned about these Filipino veterans in my earlier years. I represent the youth at our organization who go through the schools of Los Angeles City, and they are excited to hear about the Filipino veterans in this school curriculum. Los Angeles is home to the largest amount of Filipinos outside of the Philippines, so it is a great honor to be here, and I know that for all of you who are voted into this position, we trust you into making a decision that reflects equity for our community. Thank you again so much for considering this, along with my colleagues here and everyone back at CIPA. We thank you, and we look forward to hearing about your decision.
John Aspiras. I should say Sergeant John Aspiras. I noticed the chevrons on your military jacket.
Morning, gentlemen. I'm John, John Aspiras, a World War II veteran. Today, as the City Council passes the twin resolution, A B 199 and A J R number 6, it will be a boost to our efforts in the United States Congress that this great, beautiful city, the second largest in the nation, does what they cannot do. I am glad to inform you that of this day, the Justice for Filipino-American Veterans as a volunteer lobby group has 54 cosponsors for H R 210. We hope to have 100 cosponsors before the end of the year, and that after 18 years of legislative lobbying and court cases, after so much attrition, less than 40,000 veterans are left out of the 250,000 that the United States government recognizes as veterans. We can finally have justice and equity when H R 210 is finally passed. But right now, we are content that in Los Angeles, we have seen justice in your recognition of the heroic services of the men and women who, 65 years ago, fought the war and won it for the United States. Gentlemen, we are a dying breed. But right now, we are content that in Los Angeles, we have seen justice in the recognition of the heroic services of the men and women who, 69 years ago, fought the war and won it for the United States. We say mabuhay ang City Council ng Los Angeles. Mabuhay ang mga bitiranong at ang kanilang mga balo at pamilya. Katarungan at pagkakapantay-pantay. Mabuhay.
Thank you. Thank you.
How was that last name? Good morning, everybody. I'm Juvi Alejandino, a widow, a widow of a veteran, and have only eight children. We are here. I'm the Vice President of Por Space, the Senior Filipino-American Community Empowerment, and we are here to ask help from the City Council members that this resolution, A B 199 and A J R 6, and we are thanking their efforts given to us by Assemblyman Ma and Councilmember Richard Alarcon. Now, this will be very important to all of us. The World War II Social Studies Curriculum Act be a part of the social science instruction in Grade 7 and 12, the role of Filipino in World War II, because if not these World War II veterans, what is the success of America and its people of America? Now, these World War II veterans should have a big part their life in America. So, sila ang kawawang, inaglahi na ng tadhana. Ang buhay nila ay punong-punong na ng luha. Ang kanilang kapalaran ay naging kawawa. Nang maiwan nila ang kanilang mga minabahal na naging lasadal na ng luha. Sila ang mga bitiranong. Langit na mataas, humihingi po kami ng tulong. Sa inyong lahat, ipostre niyo. Tulunganin niyo, maricognize kaming mga veteran, at tulungan kaming mga balo at ang mga anak na uli na. Thank you po.
Thank you. Jack Regara.
Nagpupukay po ng isang magandang umaga sa inyong lahat. Dahil po, sa kagandahan loob at paanyaya ni ginoong Eric Sugay, kami po ay napadatan.
Could we get interpretation from one of the members?
Sa awas body na ito, para nang sa ganon ay tumulong. Sa pagzusulong ng adukalam batas.
Sir, hold on. One moment. If we can get someone from the community to please interpret? Thank you.
Richard Alarcon.
We got the Alarcon, but the rest of it we need to get. Sir, you can hold a minute, and you can interpret, please, sir?
I'm thanking the council, the council for supporting this resolution, and I thank Eric Sugay and Richard Alarcon for calling us to give our piece, and he gives thanks to all the council members from the bottom of his heart.
At ako po ay kumakatawan sa mga Second World War veteran dito sa Los Angeles, California. He's representing the World War II veterans in Los Angeles, California. At natatanda ako pa po, lalo na si ginoong Eric Garcetti, siya po ay halos 10-ager pa. Nung mga naklipas na panahon, siya ay nagsisilbi sa aming mga bitiranong sa pagkain. Para nang sa ganon ay tumulong sa kanyang kandidatura para siya ay mananalo sa council. Ganon din man napapasalamat ako kay ginoong Councilmember Jose Wisar ng Eagle Rock. Sa pagkat tuwing-tuing magdadawos ng Veterans Day at ito'y hindi na magtatagal at November 11, kami po ay magiging palawin ninyo.
He is thanking Councilman Eric Garcetti, who's been gracious in supporting the City Council, Councilmember Wisar, and all the members of the City Council who have been supporting us all through the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Salamat po, at mabuhay tayo lahat. That, I think that, that need no translation. Long live to all of us.
Marus Dumalag.
Good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Marus Dumalag, and I'm here in support of A B 199. As a recent graduate from San Francisco State University, the first college of ethnic studies, I have experienced firsthand what it was like to learn about Filipino World War II veteranos as part of my academic curriculum, and I can tell you that it was that very experience that sparked my love for education for more reasons than one. First, I was happy to finally be learning about something relevant to me. For the first time, I didn't feel invisible in the content of what I was being taught. I was proud to know that the people, that there were people who looked like me that actually contributed to the history of this country. As a result, I was more inclined to excel in school. Secondly, I learned how policies like the Recision Act of 1946 have negatively impacted my community and that I could actually do something about it. As a result, I gained the agency to go out into my greater community and advocate for the equity and justice for my forgotten heroes. I learned that I could take my education and change the world. And while this list can go on, my third point would be that it had allowed me to realize my passion for teaching and that so much more work needs to be done in our education system. As a result, I am now a graduate student at the University of California, Los Angeles, in pursuit of being a public high school educator. With that said, I invite you to support us by ensuring that A B 199 passes. And while this resolution merely encourages our schools to include the experiences and stories of Filipino World War II veteranos in our social studies curriculum, it will be a stepping stone in ensuring our future in two very important ways. Number one, it will honor their service, but most importantly, this resolution sends an even greater message to the world, which is that Filipinos fearlessly fought, were fooled into thinking they could get what they deserved, but that they continue to fight for what they deserved. And it is that very act we want our children to remember, that our community continues to fight and will continue to fight for what we deserve. Together, let's make history by finally including them in our history. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go to the San Fernando Valley. Donna Pierman to the San Fernando Valley.
Okay, and to make sure that Miriam's after me. Anyway, you did one thing right when you went to recognize the Filipino veterans. This is a good thing to recognize the Filipino veterans. Of course, with all the sacrifices they made, they, they should get the benefits and they should get recognized. I think the Filipino are wonderful people. We have Filipino neighbors and one who will be 90 years old in December. They love America, and many of them learn our difficult language, our English language. They give a lot to our country. I, I, I never knew about the Filipino veterans when I was growing up, and that's a shame. So, you know, these people should be recognized for the sacrifices they made. So I'd like to recognize the Philippine citizens, you know, and thank you, they're wonderful people. Richard Alarcon, this is, this is, thank you, Mr. Richard Alarcon, Councilman. This is the best thing I've seen in a long time. Let's recognize the wonderful Filipino veterans and the wonderful people that live in this country. I'd like to recognize and say that people should know about more of the things, the wonderful things that the Filipinos people do over in this country, so, and the wonderful sacrifices and the love for our country. They should be able also be recognized. But first of all, this is a step in the right direction to be able to recognize the Filipino veterans, and let's hear all their stories. I'd love to be able to hear the stories of the Filipino veterans and, okay, now let's go in a minute. And thank you very much. Let's pass it.
Miriam Fogler.
Yes, my, my friend Rose, she's gonna be 90 years old December 30th. Let me tell you, this lady is dynamic. She went through so much, she was terrified by the Japanese. They actually, actually had her, and she was so petrified and so scared. They really, they literally, terrified, they scared the heck out of the people, Filipinos over there in World War II, and we had to go, and we had to help them, and they helped us, and they, God bless them all. And, you know, she, she's been traumatized by, but she's, she's, she's going through okay now. She's, she's making it through. She's got family supporting her, and I don't know what happened, but I don't know if she lost her father, but they, anyway, she's, she's doing fine, and I want to bless them all. Thank you so much for serving our country like, like my, my, my brother, my father and his brothers all did. Look, God bless you, all you Filipino veterans. You should get it. And everything else in my heart, thank you, and thank you, Councilman Alarcon. You made my day. This is beautiful day for me. All the 22, 33 years I've known Filipinos, I never knew that they had such a beautiful history. I didn't even know this aspect of World War II. What a shame that this was not taught in public schools. Thank you.
All right, back to City Hall. Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Garcetti, then Mr. La Bong. But, I'm scared, excuse me. Mr. Alarcon, you gotta just push your button.
No, no, it's his motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Alarcon, but I only went by the queue, and it's three people, and there you go. So, Mr. Alarcon, take it away.
Council members, first, let's thank Council General Mary Jo Bernardo Alarcon for being here once again to represent her community and our community. Also, the representative from Senator Lu, and of course, the representative from Fiona Ma's office. Fiona has introduced this bill three times. Fiona has introduced this bill three times. And in 2006, when she first introduced it, there were, in the Bay Area, she tells me, there were 86 Filipino veterans. And today, there are 17 Filipino veterans from World War II. I also want to thank Eddie Angeles for speaking so eloquently and personally about the reality of why this bill, why these measures are needed today for the next generations to come to build pride and understanding in their culture so that they understand their contributions to this country and will never be diminished. You know, my, my father was also in World War II. And in fact, he built two homes from the GI Bill and was, received medical care that he had never received before going into the service. And so I can appreciate the benefits that were given to those veterans who fought in World War II. But there is a forgotten group of veterans that were never provided for. Now, if this sounds familiar to the public, it's because we keep repeating this. I introduced this measure about 15 years ago when I first served on the city council. And it's sad to think that even today, we still have not fully come to bring closure to this issue, which is so much deserved, particularly since so many are passing as we, as we fight for this. So let's be clear. The first measure is AB 199. This would, this measure has gone to the governor's desk. And by our action today, I'm hopeful that we'll encourage the governor to sign this measure to, to recognize Filipino history in our curriculum. We don't do that, and, and I, as a Latino, I can tell you, growing up with history books that didn't mention our history very much, and if they did, it was usually Pancho Villa and the Bandito. And, and we changed history, and we need to bring that same justice to the Filipino community. And secondly, AJR 6 is the Jackie Speer Resolution to Call the Filipino Veterans Fairness Act of 2011, which would rescind the action of President Truman in essence and allow for Filipino veterans to be recognized for their service in World War II. Let me make it clear. The United States government promised the Filipino veterans, the Filipino soldiers during World War II that they would receive health and pension benefits as U.S. soldiers. It was after World War II, with the Recision Act of 1946, that the president declared that the Filipinos shall not be deemed to be or to have been in service in the military or national forces of the United States or any component thereof, or any law of the United States conferring rights, privileges, and benefits. In other words, sorry, we promised this to you, but you could not have it. Well, that, that is wrong, and that is not what America was built on. This is something that we need to keep reminding people of. And so I hope that, and those of us who have very high concentrations of Filipino in our, in our communities, Mr. Garcetti having Filipino Town, of course, Mr. Carthanes and I sharing Panorama City, Sun Valley with high concentrations and elsewhere throughout the city. We need to make sure that generations of not just Filipino kids, but of all kids, understand the contributions of the Filipino community. And so I hope that we will sign these measures. I'm sure that this council will. We've been a big supporter of this in the past, and we will continue to be. And I appreciate the opportunity to spend some time talking about it because the public needs to understand this issue. That, that we will bring a better understanding of history to the United States by passage of these two resolutions. So let me close by quoting General MacArthur, who said in 1951, "That old soldiers never die, they just fade away." And while old soldiers may fade away, we cannot, we should not, and we will not forget the memory of the sacrifices of Filipino veterans. I ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Garcetti.
First of all, thank you, Richard, for putting this forward and taking a sensitivity in an issue that frankly, we should have taken a lot more attention in the years past. I had the privilege, when I was Chair of the California Cable Television Association, to go to the Philippines and do a series of television interviews. I interviewed the president of the great country. Plus, I hung out with a lot of people in the Philippines and learned a lot. First of all, there's a million Filipinos throughout the United States who send money back to the Philippines and keep the Philippines afloat by working here. An incredible group of Americans come from the Philippines in historic sense. Frankly, these two pieces of legislation are a must. Just to restate what 13 item here is, this is basically that says the Commonwealth of the Philippines and the Philippine Scouts eligible for certain veteran benefits and would support for the state of California for benefits pertaining to the veterans from World War II. And then the second is even easier to understand, which is to include in the history book the history and the experience of the Filipino community. And I put on my veteran's hat from the Vietnam era. I keep it in the drawer here, and I only put it on when we're in a serious moment. And frankly, I think of everything regarding the Vietnam War. Anyone who's ever worn a uniform, the moment they put the hat on, you think about what war is and you think about the sacrifice that people have made. And I put this on in solemn solemnity and solidarity and support for the Filipino people. These are great pieces of legislation, and as a Vietnam-era vet, I salute the Philippine-Americans for what they've done for our great nation and the world. Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcetti, follow Mr. Labong.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you for your service as well. And, Mr. Alarcon, thank you for taking the lead and making this happen today. Don't worry, that's all. But we really appreciate you not only powerfully speaking on both of these, but making sure that we had the turnout and the reflection of the community that is here today. And it's always wonderful to see the best leaders in this city, bar none, the folks that come here time and time again to make sure this issue has never forgotten. And this chambers has stood with you so many times because when we don't have what we want at the national level, we are not voiceless. We have a strong voice here and at the state level, and we will continue to push. You know, wars change fronts, and we had a victory a couple of years ago, finally, when we had recognition for, for veterans. It was something that you've heard me speak about many times, very personal to me because my grandfather, an immigrant from Mexico, fought in the Philippines alongside those very same soldiers and as a result, got his citizenship and got the benefits and was able to raise a family here and to provide for my father and my aunt. And I'm here because of that. And that justice that had been denied for so many years was made right, but for others, it is still waiting to be done. And, you know, as the years go on, it makes me sad because the people that we know would also be with their brothers at the microphone are no longer here. Like Pepping McLeod, who was here so often and said the Pledge of Allegiance in three different council meetings to inspire us, gone. The men who fought for our freedoms, not just in the United States, but in the world. So as wars change fronts, this is the new front, to make sure not only we get benefits for those that are left, but also to educate people about what happened. That's why we have the memorial in Historic Filipino Town. That's why every school needs to make sure that they understand that. That's why this has to be tied into the history of our country, not just the history of the Philippines as well. And so we rise in the strongest support today to make sure that justice is served again, that we recognize that many of us would not be here, where probably none of us would be here in the way that we are, were it not for the bravery of these men who stood up for all of us. And we know the conditions that they fought in back then, and they are suffering some of the toughest conditions, health-wise, isolated lives. When I walk precincts in my own district, which I continue to do even between elections, I knock on doors and find veterans behind apartment doors, sometimes living five and six in a one-bedroom apartment because it's all that they can afford. It is time to do the right thing, and we thank Senators Lou and, of course, our great Assemblymember Fiona Ma for making sure that this is not forgotten. And thank you again, Mr. Alarcon. We will get justice, and we make sure that the story is never, ever forgotten.
Mr. Labong, follow Mr. Reyes and Mr. Weezer.
Lot of praise to you, Richard, but it was greater praise from the people, both in the public comment from bad eyes and the people here. You've always fought for things in your experience in Sacramento, so I was glad to second on the educational issue because education is so important. So I just wanted to rise, and also to you, Mr. Garcetti, one of the first press conferences we did together was down in MacArthur Park, where you called for this action several years ago. And always, Mr. Rosendahl, for your service as a veteran, we cheer. But to the people, it is about knowing each other. And Council General, so special that you're here, and knowing each history and being able to have others know. I'm always amazed how much my son, who's 13, learns about other people now because the doors have been opened, and it goes back truly to when Tom Bradley first got here in City Hall in 1973 with the transformation of New Los Angeles. So this is long overdue, and I look forward, and I say salamat.
Thank you, Mr. Labong. Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to stand and acknowledge Councilman Alarcon's stamina and not giving up. It's only been 15 years as a legislator, but for the folks, the people, who never forgot and continue to fight. In the MacArthur Park, there's a beautiful monument. It's the MacArthur Monument. And in this monument, you actually have a layout of the Philippine Islands. It's been sorefully neglected for many years. We paid attention to it. We're going to clean it up. We're going to bring it back. Because it is important for the children of all races, of all backgrounds, to understand what America is about and the special contribution that the Filipino community has given and sacrificed for this great country as Americans. So I appreciate Eddie, your story, a city attorney, local guy, done good, and be able to express and share with us your grandfather and now your nephew and their contribution to this great country. And you are but a microcosm of many, many individuals from the Filipino community who continue to give to this country. So it is only right that we continue pushing. It's only fair that we continue to support this. And I encourage that we celebrate every moment that is offered through these monuments. I look for the day where we can all be together there, we give that monument a facelift, and we can have our children there. And hopefully, the local grammar schools understanding what an American is and the immigrant experience is so special for that. So thank you so much, and I can encourage you to keep fighting, and we're here to support you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weezer.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you to all the speakers who are here once again sharing with us your passion and also sharing with us history, which is so, so important. And it's interesting that, you know, we grow as a country depending about what we learn in textbooks in our schools, what our parents tell us, what our grandfathers and grandparents tell us. And if our young people are not taught about a particular section of history, it's almost as if it never existed. So we must tell people the fight, the passion, the tenacity by which Filipino veterans fought next to American soldiers and fought for liberty and justice that we all enjoy now. So I thank you for being here. I thank Mr. Alarcon for bringing this to our attention. Each year, I am proud to work with many of you on the Veterans Day Parade in Eagle Rock, where we start off that day with a celebration in front of the Eagle Rock City Hall, where we acknowledge the Filipino Veterans Memorial that exists there. I look forward to seeing you there each year, and thank you for your service to our veterans. We must continue to fight to make sure we get all our benefits that are justly due to our Filipino veterans. And let's not forget that this is a very important part, not only American history, but world history, and let's put it in our textbooks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. No one else on the queue. The matter is now for a vote, colleagues. On this matter, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
13 eyes, you have it. Thank you very much. Congratulations to our great Filipino community. Thank you. Fourth with, thank you very much. It'll be fourth with. Thank you, colleagues. Next title will be number eight, please. Number eight. Number eight, we have a few cards on this matter. Mr. Weston.
Mr. President, it's my understanding that this has been worked out, and the individuals that wanted to speak are fine in not speaking.
All right. On that matter. Okay, we have an amendment coming forward on this. All right, let's leave that on the table. Mr. Rosendahl.
Item four, I'd like to continue for one day.
Item four, continue until tomorrow, Wednesday. Colleagues, any items you want brought up on priority? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, the next item, please.
Item nine, call special for cards.
Number nine. Arnold Sacks, Dr. Williams. Arnold Sacks and Dr. Williams. Mr. Garcetti. We're going to continue with the meeting, please. Photographs in the back. Thank you. Dr. Williams and Arnold Sacks on number nine.
Dr. Clyde Williams, also Dr. Tom Williams. This particular issue comes up every year. There's also two other issues that come up every year. The fires, such as in Mandaval Canyon, and the department of, sorry, the L.A. Fire Department's brush clearance. We have the same problems with the same issues. There's no clearing of vacant lots for the brush and weed clearance, and there's no clearing of many lots that are occupied and unoccupied by the fire department. You have overlapping jurisdictions for all vacant lots in the designated high fire areas. So make one agency in charge of all of it. Have the L.A. Fire Department control those areas that are within its jurisdiction and leave the Lot Cleaning Division, Bureau of Street Services, to do those outside of the fire departments because we're not getting good enforcement on the areas that are causing fires, such as in Mandaval Canyon and many parcels within the CD-14, CD-1, and CD-13 areas. So consistency, arbitrary requirements. We don't know what the requirements are for lot cleaning. And they sometimes say, well, it's the fire department's requirements. Well, why not have the fire department adjudicate all lots within the fire area? Brush fire area seems quite simple. Right now, my neighbors, some of them are getting lot cleaning citations. Some of them are getting fire department citations. Arbitrary application of the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks, Arnold Sacks waves. On this matter, seeing no one on the queue, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
And let's go back to number, I understand number eight is now ready. City Attorney asked that I read the names into the record of those fill out a card for public speaking. Doug Fitzsimmons, you wish to waive speaking, Mr. Fitzsimmons. And Marjane Safinha waving, and Betty Billet waving, public speaking. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Corretts, round number eight.
I just want to move the amendment, 8A. It's a community consensus on neighborhood council boundaries, and we thank members of the Soro Neighborhood Council for being here and ask for an eye vote.
Very well. Mr. Weston, any comments? Move it along. Okay. On that matter, then, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Very well. Mr. Kikkorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had voted earlier to reconsider item 26. A substitute motion has now been circulated, and I'd ask that that be given, and I vote whenever it's appropriate.
Number 26, we can take that up now. No cards on that, colleagues, on number 26. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Very well, thank you. Next item, please.
Item 10, call special for cards.
Number 10. Matt Dowd. Matt Dowd not here. Arnold Sacks, number 10. Arnold Sacks, number 10.
Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. Item 10 refers to the fixing rates and charges for non-ambulatory passenger vehicle service in the city of Los Angeles. And item 11 is the rates for private ambulance service in the city of Los Angeles. So private ambulances, public ambulances, non-ambulatory passenger vehicle service in the city of Los Angeles, just exactly. Could you clarify what non-ambulatory passenger vehicle service in the city of Los Angeles is? Would that include taxis? Would that include the buses? Would that include LADOT? Would that include limousines? Would that include tour buses? And what is the percentage of cities gets from these vehicle service charges? Could that be clarified? I guess not. How many people are in this chambers right now? Can we get a quorum call?
Thank you. On that matter, colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item, please.
Item 16, call special for cards.
Number 16.
Yes, thank you again. Good morning. I'm glad to see that council is taking appropriate action for lease approval for office space for the West Adams Neighborhood Council. I'm just kind of curious because this is an article from March 3rd and in this article talking about the election that was held back in March. One of the items was the DWP ratepayer advocate and the fact that neighborhood councils would be involved in choosing the council, the DWP Board of Commissioners. And I'm so I'm wondering, you can take action on the lease approvals. When are you going to start taking action on how the neighborhood councils will be involved in choosing members of the board of the DWP? We noticed the speed that you're moving for the ratepayer advocate. I'm afraid time will stop before you get to that part of the decision-making for the neighborhood councils.
That matter is now before us, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item, please.
Item 17, call special for cards.
Number 17. Matt Dowd. Matt Dowd not here. Matters before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item, please.
Item 19, call special for card.
Number 19. Matt Dowd. Matt Dowd not here. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item, please.
Item 20 for cards.
Number 20. Matt Dowd. Number 20, Matt Dowd not here. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item, please.
Item 23 for cards.
We did check on the quorum. There is a quorum. The council members are in back taking photos with the representatives from the Filipino communities. We do have a quorum. That was number 23?
Twenty-three, yes.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Item 23 refers to $200,000 in general purposes council district eight funds for the summer youth employment program. And I held 25 because that's also support for community programs, $100,000. And so I'm wondering, A, the summer youth employment program, which is great, how many youth were affected by this program? Could you get some numbers for the public's benefit? And it says funds for youth and programs. So how many of the funding went to the youths to be hired? And how much went for the programs for salaries or were the salaries paid to the youths to be hired? You might have read about a caucus that occurred in South Central L.A. And the funny part was that there was 170 employers who accepted resumes and conducted brief interviews, but no jobs were offered at this caucus. And the great thing about it is the meeting started nearly 30 minutes late, followed by more than an hour of introductions by members of the caucus. So these programs and public meetings that go on become almost a joke within themselves. And this is a editorial in the Daily Breeze, "Jobs Buzzword Provides Fantasy and Distraction." All we hear is jobs, jobs, jobs. All we hear about is programs that are coming out to provide interviews and accept resumes, but those don't provide jobs for the public as noted. It provides jobs for the people who are collecting the resumes. So I'm wondering, why wasn't $100,000 from District Two used for a summer youth program?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Thank you.
Okay.
On that matter, item. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item, please.
Item 25, call special for cards.
Number 25. Arnold Sacks, number 25.
Saved your time there. So again, we come back to item 25, $100,000 to support community programs and groups in Council District Two, along with item number 26, which is $55,000 to support Council District Two community service efforts. So you have $155,000 in funding for Council District Two. You have $200,000 in general service city purposes fund for Council District Eight. What about the other council districts? Do we get a update on the other 13 council districts? According to the bus bench contract, that's 15 council districts. Here's two of them. This is the end of the summer. Do the other 13 council districts have funding between $155,000 and $200,000 available to them that can be told or that can benefit the public and we can find out or the public can know how that money was being spent? Or thank you very much and we have a 13-0 vote.
Thank you very much. On that matter, colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item, please.
Council has motions for post and referral.
Post and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilman Englander requests to leave at 11:30 on September 14th and 28th for city and personal business and that means council policy.
Mr. Weezer approves that, along with the cop body. Next item.
That clears the desk.
Very well. Announcements, colleagues. Mr. Rosendahl.
Oh, yes, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a reflective comment. We just came off of Labor Day weekend and many of us are grateful who have jobs and many of us who don't have jobs are getting more and more anxious. My hope is, is that the energy of this great nation toward itself will get stronger and that we will be able to have a president on Thursday when he gives a State of the Union address, give us the kind of hope and leadership that we as a nation need. And we are where the rubber hits the road, colleagues. We are the place where the community gets its services, gets its opportunities. So it's extremely critical for us that we able to create these jobs. I know our mayor has shown incredible leadership on Measure R and by accelerating 12 projects, we can create 165,000 jobs over the next 10 years that will have a direct impact, a direct impact on the economy. Our unemployment is between 12 and 15% in the L.A. City, L.A. County area. And whatever we can conceivably do to do positive jobs that continue to build the middle class and continue to create a great nation based on a strong middle class, we're going to be okay. If we can't keep the middle class strong in America, we will become like a lot of other countries on the planet where it's all about the super rich and everybody else is the super poor. So I say to my colleagues here, we need to fight strongly. We need to fight strongly for jobs. We need to move as quickly as we can to support job creation on the local level. We don't have to get into politics of tea parties and coffee parties or any of this other kind of stuff. What we need is infrastructure jobs that help us build that mobility that we so much need. And right now, Mobility 21 is having a meeting, as Dion knows, as he's looking at that motion we're going to move through the process here. And frankly, if we go forward with those construction jobs, it creates that kind of strength in the working population of our city, which will be a model, frankly, for the rest of the nation, Mr. President, that we need to create these jobs, we need to move forward with Measure R, we need to show leadership in this nation that we're frankly not seeing enough of. And people are getting very angry and depressed out there. Frankly, all of us know, wherever we go, people come up to us and talk about either they lost their job or somebody in their families lost their job or that they can't make ends meet anymore or that health care has become overly burdensome. And with all these issues out there, I look forward to leadership in Washington over the next week because we're going into another campaign period where you're not going to see much of anything happening over the next 12 years. And so we want to move forward and get this nation going. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. LaBons.
I just want to say, Mr. Weezer and Mayor Vera Cosa, we all joined together on Sunday, September 4th, for our city's 230th anniversary. A great crowd of people came and celebrated. And the day before, there was a great organized march for the Pascita Church to the cathedral by the Queen of Angels Foundation as we all remember the city's birthday. Let's hear it for Los Angeles, everybody. 230 years old.
Thank you. Other announcements, colleagues? Now, can I ask everybody, please rise for our adjourning motions? And everybody in council chambers, if you can please join us out of tribute, please, I can ask you to rise. Thank you so much. And recognize Mr. Weezer for one first from, I know, a great luminary that the city has lost. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure many of our colleagues, if not all colleagues, would want to join in journeying today's meeting in memory of a great Angelino, Mr. Ezzat Delajani, who passed away recently. He was born on February 24th, 1928, in Tehran, Iran, and passed away in August 27th here in Los Angeles. After graduating from Tehran University School of Law with honors, he joined his father, one of the most recognized and honorable businessmen in Tehran in the family business. In time, the innovations Ezzat Delajani implemented revolutionized the garment industry in Iran. Through his close friendships with Japanese conglomerates, he managed to persuade the Japanese to export their critical weaving techniques as well as machinery to Iran. This made Iran highly competitive in the international market. At 1.80% of textile raw materials and machinery that were being imported into Iran were handled by the Delajani companies. Mr. Delajani left Iran with his family due to the Iranian Revolution and came to the United States, as he put it, almost overnight. He had to pick up and leave with his family and start anew here in the city of Los Angeles. He worked diligently to reestablish himself in his new country as a real estate investor, working from the ground up to create success with Delsin Investments and to create a lasting legacy for himself and his family. Through these efforts, he became a pioneer of the fashion and textile district in Los Angeles, which has now grown into a major industry. He is also recognized for leadership in expanding the jewelry district in downtown Los Angeles. His philanthropic ideals and community leadership earned Ezzat Delajani a high level of recognition at the city, state, and federal level. He served as the president of the Iranian-American Jewish Federation with great honor. One of his first acts as president was to establish the Iranian-American Jewish Center, which serves as a place of worship, celebration, and education for all Jewish people in the community. I was honored to name the intersection of 7th and Broadway here in downtown Los Angeles as the Ezzat Delajani Square in 2009. I know Mr. Zine was president, as well as Council President Garcetti and the mayor. And it was in respect for his leadership throughout the city and especially in downtown Los Angeles and especially for his efforts to preserve our historic theaters. Ezzat Delajani is recognized for his loving stewardship of historic Broadway theaters, a journey which began in 1982 when Mayor Tom Bradley asked Mr. Delajani to purchase the Los Angeles theater to ensure it would not be demolished. Mr. Delajani had explained to me how there was a proposed purchaser who had plans to demolish that building and he bought the building, knowing that he would lose money, but he did it for his love of the city of Los Angeles and because his good friend, Mayor Tom Bradley, asked him to do so. Mr. Delajani, when he first stepped into the theater's lobby for the very first time, was so mesmerized by the theater's ornate beauty and incredible history, he immediately realized what he must do. Today, the Delajani family owns and cares for four historic Broadway theaters, the Los Angeles, Palace, State, and Tower Theaters, and for years have protected these wonderful gems of architecture, culture, and entertainment history from demolition and degradation. I know Mr. Delajani was very pleased to see the Palace reopen just this summer after a $1 million restoration on the eve of the theater's 100th birthday. And I know he will be watching over the continued efforts to bring back the Broadway theaters and the historic Broadway quarter itself, which Mr. Delajani felt held such importance and promise to our city. Many of us are lucky to build success in a lifetime, but Mr. Delajani, as I mentioned, came and started from nothing and built a huge legacy from not only himself but for the city. And I got to know him in working with the Bringing Back Broadway Initiative and our many efforts to restore the historic theaters. And let me tell you, this is a gentleman in the true sense of the word, where he automatically commands respect, not because he seeks it, but because his mere presence shows that someone like him that we respect and honor is in the room. I went to him often for advice in how do we move forward in preserving many of these theaters and all of Broadway and got to know him on a personal basis as a friend and he is someone who I dearly miss and I'm sure he has touched many, many other people the way he touched me. The city truly lost a treasure when we lost Mr. Delajani, but I think his legacy will live on in the many historic theaters and structures he saved from demolition and many of us will now be able to see their splendor for years and generations to come. May God bless him and the city has certainly lost a good one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Reyes, and I'm sure some other people, Mr. Kretz and some others. Mr. Zine will next speak. So, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I want to join my colleague, Councilman Weezer, in recognizing and celebrating this great man. He, I mean about, I guess, since '92 as a deputy and now as a council member. And with Michael and Sharam, his sons, they were able to not only work in the manner in which Councilman Weezer described, he also owns property around MacArthur Park. He owns property along Bodri, the old Pacific Stock Exchange building. These are structures and essentially landmarks that provide the identity to this great city. MacArthur Park, it's a small, relatively small compared to everything else that they do control, but he was always about safety, about cleanliness, about serving the constituent regardless of income and/or ethnicity. He was very fair and very humble with his grandness. He was very, very humble. And to me, that meant a lot because he spoke to the everyman, the individual who makes up the city. And to me, that's what makes him so special. So it is with a heavy heart to see him leave, but I know he is free of pain now and in a much better place. And my prayers go out to his sons and their family.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kretz.
Yeah, I think it's already been well said, but Mr. Delajani was a friend of mine as well. And I got to know him when I was on the West Hollywood City Council and he was very involved in, and of course, the Persian community as one of its great leaders. I helped a little bit in helping to set up the Iranian Center, which, while it serves mostly the L.A. area, is actually located in West Hollywood. And his generosity is remarkable, but I think we don't know half of it because he was not someone that sought the attention and the acclaim for his contributions. And he was a great philanthropist and in ways that we know and in ways that many of us don't know. us don't know. He'll be sorely missed. He was just a wonderful man, and I wish the best to his family as well.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
President, I, along with some of my colleagues, attended the services, which overflowed a crowd of well wishers to the family members. Mr. Weezer, I know you spoke, the mayor spoke, at the memorial service. I knew Mr. Delajani and his sons, nephew, just a wonderful man who reached out to so many parts of the city of Los Angeles. And the Delajani family has touched so many lives and helped so many people, and offering my condolences to the family. And I thought that your comments at the services, Mr. Weezer, were perfect. What he had touched in this beautiful city of the angels, came over to this country and just found the American dream, which is extended to his children and other family members, but a real legend in the city of the angels. May he rest in peace, Mr. Delajani.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Weezer, for the work that you did to honor him and the entire community. And just a great man for this city, and all of us, we'll put all members on this, of course, for adjourning motion. Are there adjourning motions? Mr. Engler? Yes, Mr. Weezer?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Council President. Also, if we could adjourn today in memory of Rachel Hamilton, a resident of northeast Los Angeles for eighteen years. She passed away on August twelfth, 2011, at the age of thirty-seven, leaving behind her husband, Jeff Hamilton, and two daughters, Jane Elizabeth and Catherine Jeanette. Born in Eugene, Oregon on May twelfth, 1974, Rachel first moved to Los Angeles to attend Occidental College, where she developed a passion for working with the city's urban poor. Following college, Rachel worked seven years for Intravarsary Christian Fellowship, mentoring students as a campus minister, and for six years for the Center for Student Missions, connecting volunteers with service projects throughout the city. During her time with the Center for Student Missions, she partnered 9,635 individuals from throughout the U.S. with over thirty service organizations in Los Angeles. Rachel facilitated roughly 227,000 hours of volunteer work within our city and communities such as Watts, South LA, Pico Union, Skid Row, Lincoln Heights, and Ball Heights that are otherwise significantly underserved. A believer in the notion that leadership involves serving others, Rachel mentored sixty young people who came from all across North America to work with Center for Student Missions, many who have stayed on, stayed now Los Angeles and now call it home. She loved the city of Los Angeles, and she loved her neighbors, and she showed it in very real and tangible ways. Rachel's ultimate untimely passing is a loss not only to her young family, but to the fourteenth council district and to the city of Los Angeles as a whole. May she rest in peace, and our prayers go out to her and her family.
Thank you. Other adjourning motions? Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two. First one is Leona Fraser Lee, passed away August twenty-sixth. Leona Fraser Lee was born February twentieth, 1920, Johnstown, Pennsylvania. Passed away on August twenty-sixth at the age of ninety-one. Left Pennsylvania when she was eighteen for Los Angeles, searching for Hollywood fame and stardom. Her starring role became the aviator sector, where she became a pioneer in the supply chain of aviation parts. Worked through the ranks at Douglas Aircraft until 1953, when she became co-founder of Fraser Aviation Services Incorporated in 1956 as Fraser Aviation Incorporated. Today, the company continues to operate as one of the leading supply chain manufacturers of military components worldwide. True leader in the aviation sector dating back to 1944, and early methods of supply chain management, a pillar of the community, volunteer, philanthropist, and one great woman be greatly missed. Services were held September twenty-second at Forest Lawn Hollywood Hills, family request donations to Los Angeles, Orphanage Guild juniors in memory of their mother and grandmother, a great woman who made history. Survived by daughters, Kim Fraser Kay, her son Robert L. Fraser, who I attended school with years ago, four grandchildren, Kyle, Kenna, Casey, and Rob, and stepchildren, Terry, Ed, Christie, Tyler, Emmon, and Jake Emder. May she rest in peace, Leona Fraser Lee. And I attended services yesterday afternoon for a man that I met at the Jimmy Kimmel Show, who was a former member of the New York Police Department, Francis Michael Potenza, also known as Uncle Frank. Uncle Frank was born November eleventh, 1933, in Brooklyn, New York, from the union of his parents, Michael and Ann Potenza. He was also raised as a child, married to Chippy for twenty-eight years. He worked for the New York Police Department for twenty years. He retired and came to Las Vegas, became a security guard for Caesar's Palace, not to mention working security for Frank Sinatra as his usual security guard. Also had another seven years ushering at St. Patrick Cathedral in Manhattan. Later joined the cast of his nephew's late-night television show, Jimmy Kimmel Live, where he became a regular cast member as Jimmy's Uncle Frank, the security guard, where he was known and loathed by all for nine years, often seen together with Aunt Chippy and a lot of antics on the show, including Uncle Frank and Aunt Chippy's adventures. Frank passed away August twenty-third in Los Angeles, where he will be truly missed by friends, family, and viewers. Survived by three daughters, Anne, Sally, and Mickey, their husbands, Josh, Peter, and Eric, his granddaughter and namesake Frankie, and his brother Bart. May he rest in peace, Uncle Frank from the Jimmy Kimmel Show.
Thank you. If I could co-present that with you, he was a great guy and just the best straight man you could have in comedy and hilarious part of that show, but a good, good, straight through and through man that...
He and I used to compare notes on, he arrested three people in his twenty-year career in the numbers that I arrested in my career with law enforcement.
Yeah, you arrested many more, but some of them were innocent, weren't they?
Really a great, great man. May he rest in peace.
All right. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we adjourn in memory of John Randolph Jack Hubbard, who is the former U.S. Ambassador of India from eighty-eight to eighty-nine, also the eighth president of USC, who passed away on August twenty-first at the age of ninety-two. Mr. Hubbard became the vice president, provost of SC in sixty-nine, served in that capacity for one year, and then upon unanimous election succeeded Norman Topping as the university's president in 1970. As president, he set priorities on building the academic strength of the university. He also was successful in laying a solid foundation for the dramatic gains in research institution. During his first year in office, USC became a member of the Association of American Universities. And over the course of his decade of leadership, USC rose from thirty-third to nineteenth in the National Science Foundation ratings. Additionally, Hubbard's leadership application for admission at SC rose from forty-one-hundred in 1970 to eleven thousand in 1979. In seventy-five, he built the financial support of the university. Hubbard launched Torch Century Two campaign for $265 million effort. That campaign was one of the most ambitious and later concluded with $306 million for university programs and endowment. During his administration, USC established the Emeritus Center, becoming the first university in the country to emphasize a lifelong connection with retired faculty and staff. Hubbard continues to support the center as a senior advisor. He also dedicated, was a dedicated teacher and served a dual role as administrator and educator throughout the tenure as president, leading a weekly graduate seminar on British diplomatic history. After resigning the presidency in 1980, for a decade, he held the John R. Hubbard Chair in History at USC, which friends and colleagues had endowed in honor of his academic leadership. He continued to teach as a member of the history faculty at USC until failing health forced him to stop at the age of ninety-one. He was born in Belton, Texas, earned his AB, AM, and PhD degrees from the University of Texas. After serving as private secretary to commissioner of the Interstate Commerce Commission in Washington, DC from thirty-eight to forty-one, he enlisted in the U.S. Navy before the bombing of Pearl Harbor and took flight training with John P. Kennedy Jr., the older brother of John F. Kennedy, who was later killed during the war. During his five-year tour of the Navy aviator in World War II, Hubbard attained the rank of lieutenant commander. Hubbard contributions have been memorialized, as well as in the USC Mexican-American Alumni Association's highest honor, the John R. Hubbard Award. This was given to him because of his tremendous support during the inception of this organization in 1977. He survived by his three daughters, Lisa, Melissa, and Christie, six grandchildren, his former wife Lucy, and his longtime partner Marcia Adams. Memorial service will be private, but USC and the Hubbard family will hold celebration of his life in early October 2011. We have all members?
Thank you. We'll put all members on that, for sure. Thank you. We do have one special item. Folks, you can sit for a second. We had one that came in during our adjourning motion, so I'd like to call on the city attorney to speak to its findings on special one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council requested the city attorney's preparation of the ordinance and development agreement in late August on the Howard Hughes Development Agreement matter. Due to the council recess, council has not been able to introduce the motion regarding reducing the public hearing period to ten days on the project until now. Immediate action is required due to the impending expiration of the current development agreement and impending funding deadlines. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
All right. Anybody else on the findings? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on the findings. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is now before us. On the substance, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. And colleagues, this has been a project in development for three years in my district. Many community groups met with the developers. We worked out an arrangement. It took us a couple of years. We got to the point now where everybody is very happy. We're up against the clock in terms of expiration dates, as I put this motion in today, to expedite it and move it forward. We're going to be receiving, which is part of the joy of it all, an incredible grant that will help us finish the Sepobita streetscape, which is a terrible piece of property as you come into Los Angeles, where you see all the sidewalks buckled up and the trees there. And they're putting 1.85 million in a special trust fund that will be used to help us go forward with it. They are building some affordable housing in the mix, and we worked out all of the issues with community groups, so I would love your support on these findings so we can go forward with this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else on the substance? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. That is approved. With that, folks, that is the end of the meeting. As soon as we ask the clerk to call the roll. Let the clerk please call the roll. Thank you. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. We will next be in session tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. Look forward to see you then. Thank you.